I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pleasure of the flag, please. All right, welcome everyone. Happy New Year. Our first meeting since the new year. I wanted to make everyone aware, we are videotaping the meeting as we videotape all of our meetings. And during the Planning Commission meeting, they had a very difficult time with the talking that was in the rear of the room to be able to capture the minutes 100% correctly. So I just wanted to let everyone know if you could please refrain from discussing in the back so that it won't be picked up onto the video. Thank you. Okay, first up, minutes of December 18th, 2019, we have a motion to approve the minutes. We've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve financial report?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Only discussion, I just wanted to give a report. The period ending December 31st, 2019, the town of Elton currently has had in their general fund a total of $537,339.99 in our general fund. We have $1,799,812.51 in our water fund. We have $8 million... I'm looking at that correct. $8,433,751.30 in our sewer fund. Our major facility fund, we have $3,522,928.5 at year end. Any other comments, questions on the financial report and payment of the bills? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. First up, it's a little earlier than 7:05, but it is... You know something, we're going to go ahead and let's bring the census up. Oh, let's do the budget amendments first. Okay, you're on, Steve.
I have two budget amendments this evening. First is the amendment number 2020-04. To recognize $124,883 in insurance proceeds that were used to repair the municipal building as of all the damages from the August 2019 storm event.
Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2020-04 for $124,883? So moved. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that budget amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second amendment is number 2020-05 to recognize a grant from the county from the Deputy of William H. Amis Fire Rescue Annuals Fund of $4,555. And those funds are then sent directly to senior fire companies in Elton.
We have a motion to accept budget amendment 2020-05.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to go ahead and right into the public hearing at 7:05. Mr. Dwyane Toney is representing Mr. Jason Preston on an annexation A2-2019. Will even have a chair up there for you, Mr. Preston.
Aye, sir.
I don't think this is going to be long. We've already introduced the annexation, but Dwyane, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This annexation resolution is to annex into the town parcel 234, grid 1, and Cecil County tax map 312. It's 0.2928 acres or 12,755 square feet approved by a house. The property is currently zoned ENU, which is employment mixed use in the county, and we're asking for it to be zoned more to the town since it's very similar type in terms of the housing that would be allowed. The sole purpose of this is to allow the existing house to be come into town. It's already connected to the town's water system. This will allow it to be connected to the town's sewer system because it has a septic system that's failing. You pump it out weekly. So that's the purpose. Frankly, if Mr. Preston would have owned this property back when the development next door was annexed in, he would have come in then, but he didn't. So that's why we're here. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. I have none. I've read the report. Gene, do you have any statements in regards to this?
We received a letter from Cecil County government stating that the R2 district does not permit uses that are substantially different than the county's... This is actually the S.T. zone. Their maps are a little confusing. I'll look at them. It's definitely, it's an S.T. zone. Nor does it permit a density that is substantially higher, so no action was required by Cecil County on the proposed zoning change. We also received a letter from Merrill Department of Planning, basically agreeing that unincorporated on place should be annexed into the town. And there was some guidance for after post-annexation notifications.
So real quickly, they're coming in at what zoning?
R2.
R2. Anyone from the board have any question, comments for Mr. Toney or Mr. Taylor? Or Mr. Preston? Hearing none. Is this a public hearing? Anyone have any questions, comments in regards to this annexation? You're welcome to just raise your hand and come up and speak. You can talk for or against. There we go. Thank you. You can speak for or against, or any comments. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve annexation A2-2019?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the annexation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have Mr. James Massey. Come on down. Mr. Massey's going to talk real quickly and very thorough on the 2020 census, which is extremely important to the town of Elton and the county. And I want to thank that we have Mr. Alan Miller and Ms. Kathy Gregory along with us tonight. Thank you for coming to our meeting.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. I know a few minutes to talk to you in line. As you know, the 2020 is the census year every 10 years. And for the first time, the state was concerned about the lack of participation in the past. And so they have actually encouraged local support to help make the census participation very in the front of our public. So Cecil County Council agreed to form a committee, and I think we have a representative from Elton. And we appreciate that. We have some... In your packet, we're showing basically a brochure that says the census is easy to do. It's easily complete. It's very important, as you know, and it's confidential. And we're wanting to see if we can get our help because one of the lowest participation rate in 2010 was the town of Elton and the surrounding areas. And so for each person that doesn't get counted, Cecil County, whether it's the schools, the library, social services, we lose $1,800 a year if they're not counted. So we've lost millions of dollars because people won't fill it out or won't respond. So this year, where the National Census Bureau has allowed for online participation as well as a telephone toll free that will allow people to either complete their census either as a forum or the alternative online or by telephone. And so we've formed the committee and we've reached out to partners such as in the social services department, the health department, the community services department. We're working with all the municipalities to try and push to make the public aware of how important it is. And so I come here today, we're hoping that April 1st will be the National Census Day and we'll have big activities, but beginning mid-March, they will be sending out the census and we want to try to make the public aware of the importance. So we are making a video that we would hope somebody representing the town might be talking about the instance of your new recreation center because that, I understand, has gotten state money. And the video will try to illustrate in Cecil County how important state and federal funding is. And so if I could convey, we would love to see if you would help us to form a citizens group of community leaders here in Elton to try and energize the community so that we can hopefully get a good turnout for the census. Social services, the libraries are going to offer online assistance to people who don't have computers. So we really are looking for a community effort to increase participation.
Well, listen, we're all in. I know how important it is for everyone to be counted. And I think this team is all in, and quite frankly, I'm a little embarrassed by looking back at 2010 to see how poorly the area did. And I've always stressed that those census numbers means a lot for our community because they use those numbers for a lot of different things. And we want to do whatever we can do to make those numbers as accurate as we can be. So Lou, I'm going to task you into trying to figure out what we can do. You know, my knee-jerk reaction is maybe we can get some laptops in here and invite the downtown residents to come in and actually fill the census out on some laptops in here with the Wi-Fi system. Maybe there's things like that that we can do. And if we need to see if we can get a group of people that... You didn't mention how much a census person can earn if they want to be involved in the census.
Well, all our efforts are volunteer, but we have a recruiter that is charged with training and hiring. And numerators will go after the census is over to try and find the houses that weren't counted. And so those jobs will be $19, $20 an hour. And they want to hire local people so that they're familiar with our community.
Listen, we're all in. Any comments for Mr. Massey?
You earlier said that you've lost $1,800. Is that per year? Is that per individual?
It's per individual per year.
It's $18,000 over the 10-year period, the 10-year census.
Correct.
Every monthly, 10 years.
Okay.
And it's only 10 questions. Now, there's multiples, 2 to 10 questions. I'm going to take a real poll. Not a real poll.
And what's the timeframe you have to start to finish?
We're beginning our campaign in the next few weeks. The forms go out mid-March, our big census day April 1st, and then we'll sort of trail off. And so it's an ongoing process during the spring to encourage our participation. And then in summer, they'll be going around, the numerators will be going to the community to pick up the people that they can, who have not completed it.
And if you have children, you have to count everybody. One of the lowest counts is under five years old. So count everybody. And if you have teenagers or away at college, they live here, count them.
You know, looking at the statistics in it, we're off by 22%, and we're 15,000, 16,000 people. That's 3,200, 3,300 people. It's a lot of money that we're missing out on.
And so we're targeting the hard-to-reach people. So it's people who maybe have disabilities, they're not English-speaking, they may not be able to read, the homeless, all those groups. That's what we're really targeting to see if we can make a difference.
Very good. Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't be involved.
Any public comments?
Not at this point. Thank you, guys. Okay, it is 7:15. We're five minutes behind our public hearing time, but now we have a public hearing, a request from Southfield's Elton Capital Development for application for a PUD floating zone approval for the following tracts of lands. Do you want me to go ahead and read this, Gene, or...
Sure.
On the agenda, we have... I'm going to just go with the tax maps. Tax map 316, parcel 169, which consists of 54.953 acres. We have tax map 319, parcel 2450, consisting of 101.6347 acres. We have tax map 320, parcel 2390, consisting of 46.5725 acres. We have tax map 320, parcel 2369, consisting of 59.467 acres. We have tax map 320, parcel 2371, consisting of 244 acres, .0779 acres. Tax map 323, parcel 79, portion doesn't give me how many acres. And tax map 324, parcel 2394, consisting of 39.01 acres. You are on Shawn Davis with Morrison Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can, I'd like to hand out... Indeed, they hand out the everybody's license and... If I can, I'd like to hand out copies to the audience. This is the same presentation for those of you who were at the Planning Commission. So if you have that presentation, you don't need it again, but... Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight to review Southfield's development PUD floating zone application. Please, kind of with me, Ray Jackson, who is the applicant from Southfield's Development. We also have Dwyane Toney, who is the land use counsel, and my colleagues Amy Pitro and Brittany Singh from Morrison Jesus.
Does your clicker work, or Michelle's clicker?
As outlined in the PUD ordinance, there are a series of goals and objectives. They focus on design, balance of land uses, and efficiency and effectiveness of the PUD. And we believe that our PUD floating zone application needs to meet all of these requirements. One of the requirements is to identify the location of the PUD in relationship with the town and the transportation networks. And as you can see, the PUD is outlined here in red to the south-southeast of downtown area. We have I-95, 240, 213 coming through here. And we have a general land use plan. The purpose of this plan is to illustrate the general designation of land uses throughout the property. It's important to note that the total property is 632.7 acres. Prior to our planning commission meeting, the critical areas commission came back and they said, in concern or question regarding the floating zone within the portion of the property that is critical areas, we have removed that property from the application, reduced the total land by 55.6 acres, a total of 577.1 acres for the PUD. About 96 acres is identified in this light green here that you can see is yellow on the handout. That is median density residential. We have 32.7 acres identified for high-density residential. There's 54 acres sports complex here, 24 acres of commercial located here, and also after here in parcels B and G. 22.9 acres of logistics ware... I'm sorry, 229.24 acres of logistics warehousing located right here in parcel I. Generally speaking, 146 acres of buffers, environmental features and whatnot. We'll get back to that in a second. As open space, one of the requirements of the PUD is that a minimum of 50% of the total site be residential and open space. And as you can see, we actually have 56%. We've exceeded the 50% requirement, but 56% of the site is residential and open space. We're required to provide a phasing diagram of how the property will be developed over a period of years. It will take several years for the property to be developed. Phase 1 includes parcel C, a portion of parcel B, parcel F, and parcel I. That will be... We're going through the approval process. We hope to have that complete by August of 2020. Construction will begin in September 2020. Phase 2 includes the remaining portion of parcel B where the senior apartments are, parcel E, the retail up along 213, and parcel G, the daycare facility, additional commercial up along Off-White Hollow Road. That approval process will begin in August of 2020 after we've gone through the first approval process. We anticipate that being complete in March or to the April of 2021, and construction beginning in May of 2021. The third phase includes parcel H, single-family homes located right here in the center of the property. That process will begin in December of 2020 through August of 2021, and construction will start in September of 2020. Again, as part of the PUD application requirements, we are required to provide percentage of each building type, number of units, and the locations and vendors. A little bit difficult to see here, but this is an illustrative plan of the community, which lays out the details of it. But generally, we agree that the land uses are residential, commercial, and logistics warehousing. From a residential standpoint, we're permitted to have 1,511 dwellings in parcels C, D, F, and H. That's the total density that we're permitted. The PUD proposes to have a total of 833 homes, almost half of what we're permitted to have in parcels C, D, and H. We have requested as part of the floating zone application, add a little bit of flexibility to that number because right now, as the single-family homes that we have proposed in parcel C exceed the minimum on lot requirements for the town. And should we come back in and massage that and narrow this up with down a little bit to pick up a little density, we would like to have the flexibility to do that. As the issue we're going to, it seems we'd like to have the flexibility to do that since we are so far below what's permitted. But we would only ask for a maximum flexibility of 15% of the total census. 60% of it, one of the requirements, the PUD is 60% of the total number of homes be single-family detached condominiums or senior apartments. And we bet mark at 60%. The commercial retail, we are permitted to have a total of 365,903 square feet. That's including parcels E and G. We are proposing about 50,000 square feet, which includes daycare and four restaurants, 125-room hotel, and gas and TV store. Again, here we're asking for 15% flexibility in that number because we've shown restaurant pads that are... You know, double-digit restaurant pads for things like caramas and whatnot. If somebody larger comes in, we're talking about the concept of maybe a marketplace, we would like to have the ability to increase that size since we've, again, we're so far below what we're permitted to yield. And in logistics facilities in parcel I, we are permitted to have $3,997,650 square feet. We are proposing $3,290,000 square feet, $3,297,600 square feet. Again, almost a million square feet less than what we're permitted. As part of the PUD, we are required to provide 25% of the total site in open space. Open space include anything that is not wetlands, hydrant, roads, or parking lots. It was great to resonate during the planning commission, you pointed out the parking lot, and he was spot on. What we have here is what you see in green, what you see in green here is what is open space. The areas that you see in gray, like this area right here, these areas right here, those are non-petrol wetlands. They can't be included, not included. The area that you see here, this is for buildings and parking. This is a road down to another building and parking. These are all single-family homes with roads and whatnot. At 25%, we are required to have 144.3 acres of the community as open space. We have 255.1 acres, substantially larger than what we're required to have. That resident pointed out aptly so that there is a parking lot here in the sports complex, which was not included in that number. And we said, okay, we agree with that, but we are over 110 acres more than what we're required. So I'm very confident that we will be able to meet that requirement, even taking out that parking lot. Then recreation space requires either 30% of the gross open space area, which would equate to 43.3 acres, or 0.02 acres per home, which would equate to 16.6 acres. Whichever is higher, the higher those two, the higher the government. The higher those two is obviously the term of the open space is 43.3 acres. We are proposing over 67.9 acres, which includes 13.9 acres of active recreation space, which will include a community center, pool, and a variety of other things in parcels C, D, and H. For example, this is a neighborhood park in parcel H. That is a neighborhood park in parcel H. This is a very large 7.7-acre neighborhood community center. We've got very nice open space located right here. So that's that 13.9 acres. And then we also have 54 acres within parcel F, which is the sports complex. So we believe with a 67.9 acres of total recreation space, we need and receive that requirement. Have to discuss provisions of public utilities to serve the PUD. The PUD will be served by public sewer and water. There will be a water tap located right off 213 in the northern portion of the town, a neighborhood retail center, and will be provided with public sewer.
Can you read these down?
So there will be a water tower, which is proposed right along Route 213, will have an access to 213. Less of 213, just south of our neighboring retail center.
Okay. Obviously, I shouldn't know, but you can. Pretty close.
Next to that.
There you go.
Here's a logo.
I know what happened.
There's a logo. And we have set up a meeting with the town, the town of Public Works, and the town's engineering consultant, Casey Allen, to go through our preliminary sewer findings. Talk with them about pump stations and a variety of other things. That's set up for the 22nd of this annual election. But the community will be served by public sewer. If I can ask you to go back one slide, real quickly. The water tower is located right here, okay? Just north of the... Thank you. Actually, one more? As part of the PUD requirements, we're required to identify what we believe the town's responsibilities are. The only town responsibility that we believe is necessary to design is for the future maintenance of any onsite sewer or water and roadways that will be dedicated to the town and part of the community. So any public sewer or way, sewers and whatnot that are located at the town. But it's all part of what we believe is the site planning process. Finally, the last requirement for the PUD ordinance for the floating zone application is to identify the revenue ratio for the proposed PUD for the town. We hired PRG to do a fiscal impact analysis for the proposed development. Being determined that the... So if we remove parcels A, B, and C from the application, the town might evaluate what the impact effect would be on the fiscal impact or on the fiscal benefits for the town. And at the end of the day, during the construction period, the town will receive $1,919,000 per year. And after the community stabilizes through property taxes, the town will receive $1,848,000 per year from this.
Well, Shawn, you didn't adjust the county impact.
No, we were just talking about the town impact.
Okay, but would you mind saying what the county impact?
Actually, I don't have that number.
Okay.
Really, when we were... We were asked, it was a great question, but it was like the data for it. We're able to get our PRG to evaluate the county numbers. I can get back, and you can have the data.
It should be the portion of the...
Well, I guess what I wanted to... I just wanted to let everyone know that of course, when you're a town resident, not only do you pay town taxes, but you also pay county taxes. And the county will actually reap more money for the project and, of course, the town of Elton. But I wanted to make it clear, we have some questions, I know, about school systems. And I'm taking this second to kind of mention this, but during construction period, and we could almost subtract 14%, but the county is in line to collect during this about $97,580 a year. And then after it stabilizes, less 23% would be $5,603,000 per year. And where that's important at is I get asked a lot of times, well, what do we need to do about the school systems and so forth? Well, as we all know, 70% of the county budget goes to the school systems. So out of that... So out of that $5 million that this project will generate for the county each and every year, 70% of that, or 3.5 million dollars, will be going directly to the school systems in Cecil County based on this economic route. So I just wanted to.
Excellent point.
So I just wanted to stress that that's.
But isn't speculative, is that really true?
Ma'am, you're, you can't speak at this point, but you will have an opportunity to.
Okay.
Uh, it's, and and I will answer your question. It's speculative based on these numbers that I'm seeing here. And that's all I can base it on is what we're seeing provided to us.
Fiscal impact analysis, there's a variety, there's a variety of calculations in it. It's speculative, but it's actually a pretty well-known evaluation factor. And R P R G is a decent company with a great reputation for doing such a fiscal impact analysis for the public sector. And that actually ends the presentation of the P U D slides. Thank you very much if you'd like to answer.
You can have a seat there real quick and and we'll ask, and you can, does anyone from the board have any questions, comments in regards to the overlay? Gene, Gene Minner, is there any comments that you need to make in regards to this? Can you tell us a little bit about what the planning commission stated?
The planning commission, if they're meeting on January 6th, recommended approval of the community overlay zone.
Thank you. Anyone from the board have any comments before I open it up to the public?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and as orderly as we can, we have the, we have the minutes from the planning commission meeting, or draft minutes, I want to say, from the planning commission meeting that we have reviewed, and I've seen a lot of comments in regards to that. So as we, as we asked you to speak, we have most of your comments, but we're going to give everyone at least three to five minutes to speak if you have any questions or comments in regards to the overlay zone. But we'll start on this side, and I'll kind of go around, and then we'll go around this side as orderly as we can, but come up to the podium, please state your name and your full address for the records. And Mr. Giblin, I saw you were first, so please come up and state your name and full address.
Ed Giblin, 214 North Street, right across the street. I did have a couple of comments on Southfield. You mentioned Bravo's Restaurant. Bravo's does does great in Delaware, but they do not do very well in Maryland. My son, well, is going to.
I think he actually said Carabos, not Grotto's.
Rado's.
No, Carabos.
Oh, oh, okay. My second question is, are we talking about new schools? I don't know, but you know, what what is going to be the population increase and what what effect will it have on the student? Elton right now has three elementary schools, a middle school and a high school, and I'm substitute teaching at all of them. Are we talking about one or two new schools? I don't know what the population increases, the percentage that.
Mr. Giblin, we're talking about the overlay zone and those tax maps as it was presented there. Those questions and comments will be answered as the process moves down the road. And and I will, I'm glad you're talking a little bit more about schools. I am actually meeting tomorrow with Dr. Lawson to talk about the impact of the schools for this project.
Put the board in for me.
There you go.
The other question I had, we have to start doing more for kids' activities in the town, and I would urge you to consider putting in a drone and model airplane park in some area. You know, you know, kids are fascinated with drones, and it seems that you would have some open space to accommodate.
Thank you, Mr. Giblin. Now, I'm going to kind of keep going around. I'm not pointing at anyone, but I'm going to kind of go around if you want to come up. I'm kind of giving a look. Come on down, Ms. Shirley. I get in communion.
Roy Anderson, this is from Rabbit Court. My concern is with the trucks on U40, sorry, MS, Mary Dale urged the traffic change of the Wayne Road. How are these trucks going to handle the traffic on U40? Where are they going to be directed to? Is it going to be in the right there?
Well, I can, I can say there's a traffic impact study that was just completed. I don't believe that we have reviewed it fully, but Sean, you might be able to answer a little bit about the traffic study that was just sent to us.
Yeah, so the traffic, we, they concluded the traffic study and submitted to the town, the county, and the state highway administration for review and part of the overall approval process, since we are accessing state highways as part of the project. All of the traffic from parcel I will be going up to 40, so access on the French Town and other milliner road. As part of the, there are specific improvements that are required, and what we're going through, we also have to go through is what we call a signal warrant. The state highway administration doesn't just put up lights to put up lanes. You have to have enough traffic to justify a light. We believe that that's probably the case, but ultimately, it's the highway administration's decision to do that. So we have put in a light warrant analysis as part of the resolution.
Because sometimes you're going to figure out which way the trucks are going to be going to get to 95. They're going to be going down northeast, they're going to go through town on Red Street to get to.
And you know, it's, it's a great question, actually. I was talking to Gene Minner a little bit about that today, and and of course, I can only give my two cents worth. We don't know until we actually see action happening, but I would think that anyone's going northbound would probably go through Delaware. They'll make a right and they'll go up to 896. And I felt that anyone's heading southbound would probably go down to northeast. They're not going to go through 213 and then kind of cut back. I believe everyone's GPS will show you when you, when you put it onto your GPS that you want to go to Baltimore, it always takes you down to northeast. My hope is, is it would take them all down to Precipio whether we put in a new interchange or I-95 for the truck traffic.
And because of the northeast, they're going to run down there, that's a mess already. And they're going down there as well.
Yes, they are.
So another concern is, well, we understand there's going to be the development. There's no doubt about it. But it seems like the people that will be buying these houses are going to be the ones that gain, we're going to be the ones that lose by all the traffic. They're going to have a pool. Our kids around here don't have a pool to get into. You know, that would be a great thing for the kids to have a pool. But there's one way to it, but everybody's going to.
I would say that we could try to negotiate with this developer to make it available to the whole area as it's supposed to help. Can I put our two cents in for that?
Yes, you can.
And and the parts, you know, I mean, we don't know how much development is going to be down at that, where it hit that part, I mean, that's not starting out, but you know, how much are you going to? Because I know it's too much, it's too moving. I'm not getting.
Thank you.
That's good.
Come on down, Mr. Gunn.
John Gunn of the 25th Indian Group in Elton. My property backs up to the industrial park, and I know, I'm a group guy, I've heard a number of times talking about that, the industrial park, industrial park is not good for any of the people that live around there. There's, you're going to have all the emissions coming off the trucks, all around coming off the trucks that could have been carried from Connecticut, California, wherever, you don't know what you're getting. It's all going to go somewhere. With all the blacktop there, it's going to go on our property. Now, I'm not a town resident, and I know that. I am a county resident, I still pay my taxes.
Absolutely.
That's a big concern of everybody in our development, as well as me. I have a concern about my well, my septic, the well-being, that when you put the well with your water tower and all that in use, we're going to lose our water. No one has ever said anything to us about, are we going to get any kind of compensation? I mean, I know the town of Elton doesn't want to talk to us, as you said at the first meeting, but I think the town of Elton is going to be the one that's responsible for anyone losing their water and should be responsible for giving us our well back. Same with the septic systems. If silt and runoff from the parking areas run in and fill up somebody's drain field, that's another 20, $30,000. The town of Elton should be looking at that, okay? You're within the proximity of this P U D, you know, assistance or total repair. You're looking at county residents as not being part of this when we are all a big part of this. And we need to be heard, we need to have your ears and eyes seeing what's going on, the traffic situation. I mean, you've heard it all a number of times. You don't need me to tell you all about it. You know what's going on. The impact on me is going to be the air, loss of water, loss of septic, runoff on my property, am I going to be able to grow grass? I mean, I've worked in the diesel field all my life, this, that's what I did. I'm in the truck industry. I know the diesel smoke, I know it creates soot. The soot lands on your car, your lawn, your house, takes your white roof and makes it black. Takes your gray roof and makes it black. I mean, all these things, we've never had to worry about. Being in the industrial area, big concern. It's all blacktop, it's the runoff, I mean, there are so many issues with this that don't make sense. And to grant the ability to be flexible, the P U D was built, I mean, you made all the the rules, regulations, and everything with the P U D as to what it needs to have. To make a flexible part of it, you're kind of going back against what you just did. I understand the man's got to make money. Everybody's got to make money, that's what the world's about. But to make money and hurt people, that's the wrong way to go. That's just the way I feel about the whole thing, and I wish the town of Elton would take care of the people that are surrounding that as far as our worries about our water and our septic and the potential of having a life-threatening issue be plausible.
Well, I would, I would make a comment to everyone in the audience, and I, I actually made it at the very first meeting. We will make sure that you have water and sewer. And it's either going to, we're going to either negotiate with the developer to help us with doing this, but we will make sure that the water and sewer line goes in front of your house without any type of connection fee. Now, you're going to have to be able to pay for that lateral going from point A to point B, but I think I can get that water, right, water and sewer right in front of your home.
But I'm a well water. I would say.
You're here.
I don't want to, because I would like a still clean water. I mean, I.
Is your water drinkable now?
No, it's not. Because of some other pollution that got into it.
Okay.
I have to say, I'm taking care of my water. I get bottled water from the city. When I built the house, I had great. So.
What do you suggest?
I suggest that somebody puts something in writing so that we know that we're covered.
Okay.
If we lose our water, somebody will come in and build a well or hook us up. I don't think that we should have to put out the money. We've got, as long as we have water, everybody's happy. Same with sewer. I mean, your septic system works as good. If not, the town of Elton puts something in our deed or or something legal to, so that everybody says something to fall back on.
Gentlemen, you hear, you hear loud and clear, we have to look how we can handle that. Okay, next up. Mr. Connolly, come on down.
Well, we'll see what happens in a little minute. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. You got the notes from the planning commission meeting.
We do.
There was a lot of discussion and debate, particularly about the industrial area, particularly about the location of building one. For the record, I live at 66 Sarah Drive in Elton, and my property is adjacent to building one. There was great concern among the planning commission members that that building was really just jammed up in that corner and was extremely close, real too close to the residents on Sarah Drive and also on the Long Road. Just a few specifics on that, based on what has been submitted to date, I know, Sean, there's been some alternative drawings that you've provided, I appreciate that. I'm looking at those, hope to get an email back to you next day or so. Building one is about 865,000 square feet. It's roughly 48 feet tall, about two football fields wide, about five football fields long. Put it in context of the season that we're in. 290 loading docks, 190 trailer drop spots. From the rear of my property and really any property on Sarah Drive, 60 feet off the rear of my property line starts paving area that goes around building one. That's the area for trailer drops. So 60 feet off the back of my property line, based on what's been submitted, I see a 14-foot-high box trailers. Going further out, I should mention that 60 feet, the distance from my front door actually to the street on Sarah Drive is closer to 70 feet. That's way too close. That's probably not much further than, well, take the distance, this room and add a few feet. 260 feet from the rear of my property line is building one. 260 feet for our area, all our lots are about a half acre plus or minus, that's about width of two lots. So if I stand on my lot, I look across the short distance, across my neighbor's lot just past it, building one is going to come up. I'm not going to be able to hide it, it's too tall and it's too big. The planning commission members were extremely concerned about that. They're also concerned about the impact that people raised, and I was one of them. I'm very concerned about the health that this concept is going to bring. 3 million square feet of warehousing, keep that profitable, it's 24/7 operation, it's not going to stop. It's going to be bright lights at night, not just on the building, but from the trucks that are going back and forth, shining on people's houses. It's going to have the sounds of trucks backing up, gearing up, gearing down, the rather obnoxious backup alarms that we all hear. And that's about width of two building lots away. And that's going to be constant, it doesn't go away. It doesn't take much of a search on the web, and you can find a number of prominent organizations that talk about the dangers of long-term exposure to diesel exhaust and diesel particulate matter. And that's really what this concept is bringing. So if you think about allowing that floating zone to continue, what you're subjecting the area to is going to be long-term health impacts. And I have a concern for myself, for my family, for the neighbors in the area, but diesel particulate matter spreads over a wide area. It's not just the folks here on Sarah Drive and down the Long Road. Maryland Department of Environment notes that diesel particulate matter, about 90% of it is considered fine with respect to the size of particles. It's about one-fifth the diameter of a human hair. It's pretty small. They talk about getting deep into your lungs and possibly into blood stream. They can trigger and cause health problems in respiratory system, lung functions, heart problems, and is linked to lung cancer. If you look at the OSHA website, it cites prolonged exposure to diesel exhaust and diesel particulate matter can increase the risk of cardiovascular, cardiopulmonary, respiratory disease, and lung cancer. The International Agency for Cancer Research, which is part of the World Health Organization, has classified diesel exhaust and diesel particulate matter as a group one known carcinogen. Components within diesel exhaust, such as benzene, arsenic, formaldehyde, are on that group one list. Lastly, just as an example, California has their own version of the EPA, and they cite that, again, diesel exhaust and diesel particulate matter contains known and suspected cancer poisoning substances. Long-term exposure to diesel particulate matter poses the highest cancer risk of any toxin, air contaminant evaluated. They further cite 70% of the cancer risk to the average Californian from breathing toxic air pollution stems from diesel exhaust particles. So it's not just me having a concern, a valid organization raised the same concern. Luton, California, Maryland. Luton, California, Maryland, three million square feet of warehousing and distribution, and operating it profitably. That impact is going to be here and it's going to be long-term. It is, in contrast to the objectives of the current comprehensive plan for Elton. If you look in section four point three point two, it's essentially the section that describes Southfield and what it will bring. All of the text and wording there talks about the residential aspects. There's no mention of industrial. In section four point seven, policies and actions, there are several key bullets there that talk to the impacts of something like warehousing and distribution. It says ensure future uses are consistent with the designations in table four point two and map four point two. That essentially is the land use designations and the land use overlay map. If you look on the map and you look at, you clearly see partial odd. And there's two designations there. It's noted as suburban residential and town estates residential. There's no mention of industrial uses at all. It mentions protecting the residential area from the negative impacts of adjacent non-residential development, which I've talked about, the health impacts, the closest to the building, to the residents of the area. It talks about protecting the existing residential neighborhoods from encroachment by commercial and industrial activities. So the floating zone will contrast in the, yes, will contrast with the objectives of the current comprehensive plan of record. I've talked previously about the jobs impact to the area. I think it's widely known and accepted that warehousing and distribution jobs are generally low-paying jobs. In my review of economic data that's readily available and studies conducted by the county and developer indicate that the types of jobs associated with warehousing and distribution will not be beneficial to the standard of living in this area. It will go down, not up. Lastly, I would call your attention to a similar situation that happened about a year ago in Perryville. This was a case where a developer wanted to put in a warehouse at the old Perryville outlets. He was requesting an overlay, and the outlets were currently zoned C two. The proposed building that they wanted to put in the warehouse was only about three hundred and fifty feet long and about fifty feet wide. It was noted as being six hundred and fifty feet from a residential neighborhood. That's about three times the distance that building one is from the residents of the area. There was a lot of public comment, mayor and commissioners listening to comments, and they were saying things that you heard here tonight. They didn't want it in the backyard, the closest and proximity to the residential areas, constant noise to the neighborhoods, the traffic increase, the warning noises made by trucks backing up, and one said anything but trucking. And in the end, the mayor and commissioners of Perryville, they listened to what the residents were saying. And in the end, they voted not to approve the warehouse and distribution. Same thing should happen here tonight. One last thing that I would mention, just to add to what John Gunn was saying. I would draw your attention to the pub zoning ordinance article two, the definition of a large pub. The last sentence states that non-residential uses, in this case warehousing and distribution, shall primarily serve the residents of the region surrounding the large pub. Residents can be in-town, they can be out-of-town. But this definition, since it's being developed, this Southfield's concept, if it's going to impact and serve the residents of the region, then all the residents of the region deserve to have their views objectively considered in this. I urge you not to approve the floating zone. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Don't start yet. The mayor's not here yet.
No, he's okay. We got the meeting covered. He's speaking to Mike. Did you get the name of this? All right, we're good.
Um, another question I have is they're gonna put a hotel. Why would someone stay there at a hotel?
Good question. Wondered that myself.
Would you like to answer that?
Sure.
Because the sports complex is immediately adjacent to the hotel. We'll have a lot of people who will be coming in from out of town. We'll certain amount of. Yes, hopefully.
Are you guaranteed they're gonna be sports played there? You've got people lined up. I mean, it's a hotel. They're eating a hotel ten miles.
Please, if you will, direct us, please. Thank you very much. You're sitting right beside.
There's, there's, there's no hotels within ten miles of here that anybody would really want to stay at. I mean, I don't understand why, why there would be a hotel in the country. That's, that's my biggest thing. I mean, you already got problems. You got four, you got four restaurants. You really don't have nowhere that's open past nine o'clock, except for McDonald's. Nine times out of ten, you go past there, there's cops there. So we're gonna put four restaurants and a hotel. Hopefully, we're gonna have sports. I just, I, I don't, I don't understand that. I mean, I, I would, I would at least line up work before I put the money out. I mean, I'm not gonna go build, you know, a business and hope somebody comes in. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna go out and get my customers, and then I'm gonna build it. So let's build a hotel, put four restaurants and sit back and wait while you got the big old mall. That place is, you know, you go in there, you're taking a chance. There's one that asks you for a dollar here, there. People running out of stores with merchants. I mean, it's, it don't, I don't understand a hotel. I, I don't see it. So that's all I can say.
I can't speak on it if they have, because I don't know what the intent is going to be down the road, but certainly there's a phenomenon of sports complex all across the nation. And they call it the traveling sport list, basketball, football and have you. And usually wherever one of those sport complexes goes up, there are a lot of hotels that will be surrounding that because usually people coming from northeast, southwest, as a citizen, big phenomenon, and they have housing such as the hotels where they can stay. But I'm not speaking for him. I'm just speaking for, I know my grandson is a similar thing like that, and where he goes to play.
I did this travel team, and let me tell you what. There wasn't a place a hundred miles here that, that I got to go on a travel ball team. And I traveled five, six whole hours for my kid to play ball. There's nothing around here. That's what I mean. Who's gonna come to Elton to play ball? You, you, you don't, you, you're, you're gonna go play ball where my kid's gonna get it, where somebody's gonna come see my kid, is gonna call, call me next week and say, hey, I want your kid to come by and throw a ball here or, or shoot some hoops. We don't have that talent here. Well, we don't have that talent seekers here. That's why people are not gonna come. I mean, I'm just, I'm just sitting here saying a hotel. That's why I can't understand you're gonna have houses, you're gonna have this, but four restaurants and a hotel. That's, I don't know. I'm sorry. But that's, I just, I know everything else. Just wanna go to houses, industrial, all that, but a hotel. I'm just, I think that's crazy. Thank you.
Come on down. That two of them had their hands up. Come on, both of you, come on down then.
Good evening. My name is John Dolcak. I live at three, four, Way Hall Road. I am a county resident. I'm not a town resident. I spoke at the last meeting to voice concerns again regarding septic and wells for county residents. As Mr. Gunn explained, I think we're feeling like some of the forgotten folks here are part of this application for the project. I presented some concerns with a will that's gonna be drawn down, five hundred thousand gallons a day. Enough water for probably twelve, thirteen hundred homes. We're talking about building out potentially nine hundred and fifty-seven units with your fifteen percent flexibility in the overall plan. It's a ton of water, and as a county resident, I'm concerned that our well's gonna be drawn down, and we're gonna be left high and dry, literally, high and dry. I presented the concern that we, I feel that somebody should be held accountable to make sure that if in fact any county resident in this adjacent area that is directly impacted as a result of drilling wells and drawdown and impact their wells, should be allowed to connect to town of Elton water, town of Elton sewer, at no charge, with no annexation needed in town, because I think we want to retain our independence as county residents. That's why we purchase properties where we did, to be independent. I've got a well, I've got septic, I've got solar. I live pretty, pretty freely off the grid, and I like to keep it that way. And I don't see any place where we've had those assurances. And I know we talked about it earlier, Mr. Gunn, to certainly help, and what he explained. And I feel that before any progress is made on approval for building eight hundred and fifty or nine hundred and fifty-seven homes, that we as county residents should have some sort of assurance that we're not being left holding the bag. In my opinion, we shouldn't have to pay for the work either. That was our water originally. It's essentially you can take it and you can sell it back to us.
Right.
It does not feel right, and it feels like somebody should be held accountable for that. So I want to make sure that I am clearly on record, in opposition to this P U D. I, I think the issues with respect to the industrial development are not productive to our area. We've got seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of, or seven hundred and sixteen thousand square feet of industrial spaces being built up on the old Nazarene camp. We don't even know if that's gonna be populated. Trammell Crowe was talking about using it to import another three million square feet of space. I think it's simply a logistical issue. It's easy to build a big area, drop it, dump and get out. And a county, and the county residents would be left holding the bag in that house. So maybe an option for that area. Can we be committed to maybe setting that parcel aside to build schools as part of having to bring in nine hundred new homes potentially? I think maybe that should be a consideration instead of building the industrial. Can we use it for our community? Because that truly hits the community. So those are my concerns.
Hey, John, real quickly, you're on, I'm gonna say the other side of, of Route two thirteen, I'm assuming?
Yes. I'm directly across from parcel B.
Gotcha.
So I'm very close to the empty field, very naturally.
And the water and sewer line is right there as it is, correct, Luke? The water and sewer line goes straight down Waithall Road, going down toward Kensington Courts.
And again, it's not just for me.
I understand. No, I, I.
Residents on Mulholland Road that are potentially impacted, I, I should have the same right.
Absolutely.
And there are neighbors that are not directly adjacent to this development that should be considered as part of it.
I, I want to make it very clear that I'm, I'm a hundred percent with that concept.
Building homes, great. I understand that's gonna happen. I don't see a way to stop that. But I really think from a community perspective, we need to be very concerned about this industrial problem.
I agree.
It is a huge issue. The lockdown of the fields is potentially only being used for residents of the town field. Again, they're gonna pay, maybe people pay town taxes and pay county taxes, and we have, nobody's reading the real benefit of this except for a few select folks.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Hi, I'm Patricia Wells, eight ninety-four Frenchtown Road. And to be honest, I wasn't gonna speak this evening, just because of the first meeting, it pretty much let it be known that we're not town residents, so we don't get involved. I am very concerned about the pollution. I am directly across the street from the industrial park. I have asthma. I also have an autoimmune disorder called rheumatoid arthritis, where I take an injection every two weeks to lower my immunity. When you say we can connect in for free, I think people don't realize, not only do we pay for the lateral connection, but my septic is in the back of my house. My house would have to be totally replumbed. I'd have to decommission my well, decommission my septic, and you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars. And it's not something that we asked for. You know, I moved out my two and a half acres for quiet, and I had somebody, one of the members say, well, then I'm part of the problem. Well, I bought my house that was already there. I didn't swap my house in front of somebody else's house. So even though we're not town residents, we are the ones who are in direct impact of this. And I would just ask, we, we, I didn't.
Okay, anyone else on the left side? Come on down.
I'm Steve Lambert. I live at eighty-six Sarah Drive. And the building number one's gonna be directly behind my house, just as John. And I have a neighbor that lives the last house on the corner between Ed Field and Sarah, which is gonna be just right on Open Field there. And she's an elderly lady. She has asthma. You know, and she goes outside in the spring, she wears a mask. And I don't even know with all this, if she'll even be able to go outside at all, you know, with all the things that are gonna be in the air there to, you know, affect her, her breathing. So I just wanted to bring that up. But also, I think we might be missing an opportunity here. Union Hospital just became partners with Christiana Care. They're gonna move in and, and sure, they're gonna need more office space and, you know, places for doctors to move in and, you know, have facilities and things. And I think that maybe some of this warehouse space might be better served to be office space for these new doctors and all the, you know, the building people, every, you know, testing, you know, labs and things that come in with all that. They're busting at the seams in Delaware, and that's why they're moving this way. And I just think if we could take these buildings and make part of them into professional buildings, I mean, actually for me particularly, building one would be a great candidate for that because, I mean, we're not talking about a forty-five-foot-tall building. You're talking about a, I don't know, what, fifteen, eighteen feet. And I just think it would well serve the community to have something like that here because I don't know how much ground we have left around for places like that. But I know Union Hospital, I mean, they're a person at the seams there. The only way they can expand is buy an old house and tear it down and build new buildings. And if they had an area like that, where it's all streamlined and have everything together, I mean, it'd be great. People come in, they can go one place, go see their doctor next door, maybe to get some tests done, you know, where to get an X-ray. It's all kind of, be a, a medical complex, you know? And I, I just think that would be something that would be great for the town of Elton and the community, and also very higher-paying jobs to the area. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and maybe something else to think about there as far as possibilities improving the area.
Anyone else on the left? Let's go to the right. Anyone on the right? Come on down. Mr. Rod Burr.
Rod Burr, Southern Little Court, Elton Road. I, I'm here because I really have a duty. I have a duty because I'm the president of Kithy Torshomer Association, three hundred home development. And then my community comes to me and they share their concern, share their concern, and they ask the board, are you guys expressing and protecting our residents? That's what I'm here to do. Quite a few different concerns have been expressed to me. I just want to make sure that everybody has a good understanding of what those concerns are. There's, there's a lot of concerns that I think maybe will become a, a problem, but there is definitely concern about the, the air quality impact that could, as was suggested here. That won't be limited to that area. That will, this, you know, between ninety-five and forty, our air, our air quality right now is already pretty great. If you got seven hundred loading docks with trucks going twenty-four seven, this could become a fairly severe air pollution problem at some point. could become a fairly big air pollution problem at some point. So that's one of the areas of concern. The other is if you've got those seven hundred bays where the trucks coming out onto forty, we already have congestion. So there's, and you've all heard it before. I'm just reiterating the concern that needs to be taken into consideration. We could be getting ourselves into a severe traffic gridlock problem that doesn't have an easy solution. I mean, this could be, do we want to transform this into Newcastle, Delaware? I mean, or worse? Okay, but might, but the biggest concern that I think we have is the one that's come up about the school district impact. I've had conversations with the school district office and with the State Department of Education. I've looked at all the occupancy numbers, the capacity numbers, and it seems inescapable to me that without any sort of other sort of plan put in place, there will be a forced redistricting of probably down as far as Frenchtown Road where everything is Bo Manor now between forty and Frenchtown Road is presently Bo Manor, will be moved to Elkton. And the reason for that is that the state funding assistance that this local school district qualifies for is contingent upon them first attempting to do the redistricting thing. So we've received assurances that it won't happen, but I don't think that anybody can rely on those assurances. I think it's going to happen unless some sort of plan is put forth that avoids that impact. So I'm just urging, and I know this may be premature, but I just want to keep this awareness high in our minds about, there needs to be some kind of plan that gets at some point that gives, before we get too down the approval road, so that we have, can have a level of confidence that we know that there's some sort of a workable plan in place that will avoid that kind of impact. Because I can tell you, that is one of the, that is one of the highest concerns that we have because people moved into the homes in our development specifically because it was in a Bo Manor school district they wanted. Their kids have been growing up there. You know, they got older siblings now. You know, they, they're comfortable in that school district. They really have a strong feeling about wanting to keep it that way. So again, I appreciate the opportunity for growth and the positive things that's come. I just feel like we need to be smart about it and mitigate the impacts as we plan this thing out.
Thank you. Okay, on the right side? Come on down.
Contestant on Price is Right. Hi, my name is Jessica Williams. I'm a teacher. I talk all day and so I have laryngitis. I would like to pick you back off of what Rod's had about the school. So I-
And your address, please.
One ten Frenchtown Road. So we looked at a lot of houses when we were here about five years ago. I have a sixth grader and I have an eighth grader, both go to Bo Manor. And one of the selling points of my house was Bo Manor, the feeder pattern. I'm very concerned that this is going to happen such that we're going to get all these apartments and townhouses. Those will probably sell right away or rent pretty fast. And then we're going to get H eventually. We've been talking a lot about South Fields. Let's talk about South Stream, which there are still empty lots that are never sold. I take my kids trick or treating over there. They're still waiting to be sold, their house in single family homes that are still just the lots are sitting empty. So, you know, is this really going to happen at H? I don't know. I mean, it really does feel speculative to me in the hotel. But I'm concerned mostly with my kids. So, you know, now here I go, have Bo Manor, now I get redistricted. Now my kids are in the middle of high school and have to switch to a different high school. What about my property value? You know, because Bo Manor feeder pattern does have a higher weight. It just does. So I'm very concerned about that. We have reassurances from every, from you, sir, about the well thing. I have a well too, so please include me on that. But I want an assurance about the school district. I say that the people who are in Bo Manor feeder pattern stay there and the new people go somewhere else.
Thank you. I would like to, of course, I made this comment earlier. I am meeting with Dr. Lawson tomorrow. I'm actually meeting with him at two different times tomorrow on two different issues. But I have been studying the, the plan from the, from the Educational Facilities Master Plan or 2020 Plan. And I've got a lot of questions for him tomorrow. I'll be able to report back on that, those comments. Listen, I understand why everyone wants to go to Elkton or to Bo Manor. I went to Bo Manor. And of course, we have the, we have a Bo Manor guy here and we've got three Elkton folks here.
Three of two.
Three of two. We're outnumbered up here. Okay, who's next? I'd better hush up on that one.
Brian, you can stick away, Frenchtown? I was going to go off to her one point with the South Streams, but I don't know if you noticed, while Frenchtown and Fraser, now they broke ground, the new houses are building there in Delaware. I want to know what do you think is going to draw people to this location when Delaware is going to be cheaper for you to live? Taxes, everything else. Now you're going to be putting houses in that probably aren't going to sell because you've got more houses going down a mile down, which you're actually going to be further from the industrial park. So you're going to be in better shape already. What about our real estate values? They're going to drop like a rock. I don't need any experts, nothing. I know if I was looking at a house, that's where that warehouse was, that'd be right off my checkbook. The environmental issues, everybody keeps talking about that. But what is going to happen in twenty, thirty years from now? We're going to be another Love Canal. And everybody else has already made the money and gone. And we're going to have to deal with the health issues, you know? And when these warehouses are done, the fifteen dollar an hour jobs are minimum wage. So again, we're not moving forward, we're moving backward because you're not going to be able to afford anything in this area for the fifteen dollar an hour job. Then lastly, honestly ask yourself, if this was in your backyard, your front yard, and you vote yes or no for this, because I guarantee you, nobody would vote yes for this if it was in their backyard.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we're on the right hand side. Anyone else?
Good evening. Jessica Jonah, eighteen eleven Town Point Road, Chesapeake City. Mayor of the County, I'm a county resident. And so I'm not immediately adjacent to the property and I'm not going to feel it's immediate impact in my backyard. But you might be asking yourself, so why do I keep showing up to all these meetings? Why do I speak at every meeting? And the simple answer is because I am passionate about this topic. I firmly believe that this PUD proposal is the wrong thing for Elkton and the wrong thing for the Cecil County. I'm here to ask you to consideration the impacts that the South Fields proposal will have on both Elkton and the broader region of Cecil County. I've previously appeared before you with those concerns for the project and reacknowledged the controversial nature of the South Fields proposal. I ask for you to consider that over one thousand, one hundred people have signed an electronic petition initiated by Trish Wells called Say No To South Fields, calling for the PUD project to be denied. You can find it online so you can reference the study. I ask that you reject the proposal from Morrison Ritchie on behalf of Stonewall Capital. I'll focus my comments tonight on two categories of concern. The first is the South Fields proposal is contrary to the strategic intent stated in the Elkton Comprehensive Plan and the revised PUD overlay regulations. The PUD overlay is inconsistent with existing surrounding land uses. The mix of residential to industrial warehousing is completely disproportionate to the existing zoning. The open space calculations include a privately owned commercial property, a for-profit commercial enterprise, not a non-for-profit HOA. The non-residential users will not primarily serve the region. The jobs impacted the proposals inconsistent with the Strategic Comprehensive Plan. And finally, I'll share with you my concerns as others have commented about the serious health and human safety issues. The Elkton Comprehensive Plan 2010, quoting from page one dash one, serves as the policy guide and framework for future growth in the town of Elkton. The plan's horizon is the year 2030. Quoting the legal requirements of the plan, the local jurisdictions are required to incorporate divisions into their comprehensive plans and implement them through the zoning ordinance and other regulations. So the comprehensive plan serves as the strategic guidance to ensure that the state regulations and visions are planned for and executed in local jurisdictions. In the interest of time, five out of the twelve visions in the plan are quality of life and sustainability, community design, infrastructure, environmental protection, resource conservation. Quoting page one dash one again, a high quality of life is achieved through universal stewardship of the land, water and air, resulting in sustainable communities and protection of the environment. Community design should be, and I quote, compact, mixed use, walkable design, consistent with existing community character. I'll quote again, infrastructure. Growth areas have the water resources and infrastructure to accommodate the population and business expansion in an orderly, efficient and environmentally sensitive manner. Environmental protection. Land and water resources, including the Chesapeake and coastal bays, are carefully managed to restore and maintain healthy air, water, natural systems and living resources. And resource conservation. Waterways force agricultural areas, open space, natural systems and scenic areas are conserved. So with those stated visions as context, I ask you to consider the following. In chapter nine of the plan, stated policy and actions are to quote, encourage the development of medium and high value housing, especially in growth areas. Section nine dot three dot two states that as the region grows, Elkton has an opportunity to tap into a higher income housing market. The plan further states in nine dot three dash one that the town should focus not only on the number of affordable units, but also on their distribution. Ideally, affordable units should be available throughout the town, not clustered in one street or one area. Section four dot three dot two states the undeveloped land between US forty and Frenchtown Road, known as South Fields Plan Unit Development, includes the largest area designated Town Estate, low density residential remaining in the town. And section four dot four dot one states the Town Estate District comprises Elkton's low density residential areas with a maximum permitted density of three dwellings per acre with lot sizes typically one quarter to one half acre. And as of the plan creation, was owned R2. Again, the planning horizon for the plan was 2030. In the land use section of the plan, the goals and objectives state, quote, protect residential neighborhoods from excessive through traffic and encroachment from commercial and industrial uses, and quote, ensure that future development avoids environmentally sensitive areas. The proposed plan does not meet those objectives and should be denied. Pertaining to the PUD development overlay, section four dot six F three states, the PUD zone is intended to provide for a mix of multifamily residential uses with limited commercial activities that primarily serve the local neighborhood. Development is intended to be pedestrian oriented, supported by commercial activities of a scale that is less intensive permitted in commercial areas. The newly written regulations refer to the region rather than the neighborhood, but it's fundamentally the same concept. The commercial sports park, fifty-four acres, has been touted as a facility that can attract national competitions. That was even said here tonight. That is not serving the region. The proposed PUD overlay for the industrial warehouse, two hundred and twenty-nine acres, given the size of that facility, can't possibly be limited to serving the immediate region. And so therefore does not meet the intent. The mix of residential to industrial warehousing is not warranted or supported. If you look at the percentage of acres, all you've got to do is look at the picture, right? The size of that industrial component is so much larger than the residential components. And the only way the residential components are coming close to hitting some high numbers is the high density nature of them. This project is clearly being driven by the warehousing element and the residential components and the necessary evil to gain the endorsement from this commission. The ratio is completely inconsistent with the surrounding communities and the proposal should be denied. The proposed PUD is completely contrary to the stated strategic vision for the town and will have adverse impacts on the community at large. I object to how the open space calculations were determined. In no case should a for-profit privately held commercial entity be included in that calculation. Policies and actions, section four dot seven dot three state, protect residential areas from negative impacts from adjacent non-residential development. Protect existing residential neighborhoods from encroachment by commercial and industrial activities. And section four dot seven dot five states, avoid commercial intrusion into established residential neighborhoods. It is the duty of this administration to protect the citizens. I'll shift my comments now to the concerns about health and human safety. The proposal is clearly inconsistent with the interest of the region. The health concerns are tremendous. As others have stated, diesel exhaust, specifically diesel exhaust, is a group one known carcinogen listed on the World Health and other known and other known organizations that list the cancer groups. The National Institute of Health, which is part of the CDC, states that diesel exhaust causes lung cancer and has a positive association with bladder cancer. And because of the fine particulate nature, it's small size, it's easily inhaled and when inhaled, goes deep into the lung. OSHA also recognizes diesel exhaust as a known carcinogen. The side effects of exposure also include cardiovascular disease, cardiopulmonary disease, difficulty breathing, coughing, nausea. And for those with asthma, this is particularly disturbing. Mostly though, in terms of disturbing, are the impacts on young people. Young and old suffer at much higher rates from the exposure to diesel exhaust. And I find it particularly sad to think about having a sports park that will be catering to youth in close proximity to an industrial site that is going to be contributing to potential cancer. So while we think we're doing the right thing by creating the sports park for the kids, by planting the industrial park close by, you are putting all of those children at serious risk. In 2013, the EPA established the Clean School Bus Act to curb student exposure to- In 2013, the EPA established the Clean School Bus Act to curb student exposure to diesel exhaust. Simply riding the school bus to school was a risk. That's how toxic diesel exhaust is, that our country passed a law to protect children sitting on school buses. And yet we're having a conversation about putting 700 loading bays in people's backyards close to a sports park that's going to cater to children. The environmental damage as a result from diesel exhaust should also be noted. The particulates carry over long distances, previously noted. They carry by the wind, can settle on the ground and in the water. So according to the EPA, depending on their chemical composition, the effects of their settling may include making lakes and streams acidic. This is EPA just quoting. Changing the nutrient balance in coastal waters and large river basins, depleting the nutrients in soil, damaging sensitive forests and farm crops, we should be concerned about our agricultural community here, affecting the diversity of ecosystems. I'll leave you with one final thought. The World Health Organization has taken a position on what the levels are that are acceptable with regard to diesel exhaust. And I'll quote the World Health Organization. "Small particulate pollution has health impacts even at very low concentrations. Indeed, no threshold has been identified below which no damage to health is observed." So I'll repeat that because it's a little bit of a double negative, which is indeed no threshold has been identified below which no damage to health is observed. Therefore, the World Health Organization 2005 guidelines limit aim to achieve the lowest concentrations possible of particulate matter. The industrial warehousing should not be approved at any size, at any scope, particularly given the proximity to a sports park and the exposure to those children and to the residents surrounding it. I'll close by asking you to not approve the proposal as recommended. Please make your neighbors the priority. Make the decision to protect your community. Thank you.
Come on down.
Hi, Peter Klein, 111 Town Point Road. I am not a lawyer or a politician, just a taxpayer. A week ago, I was trying to figure out what I was going to say to the planning commission. I was looking through my little copy of Chesapeake Bay Journal, very published by the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. What did I discover a couple of pages in, except that our friend Mr. Kilby is working with them to do stream bed restoration upstream in order to help improve the water quality of the Little Elk Creek and that's the Chesapeake Bay. And, you know, this, you know, and I discovered down at the bottom of the article, by the way, that this is all paid for with taxpayer funds and grants from the state and the federal government, right? So we all end up paying for everything. And then, you know, I end up at the planning commission meeting, and what are we talking about? We're talking about a significant part of this project, an important part of the project, which is taking three-plus million square feet of what is today farmland, which permits the water to go anywhere except into the Chesapeake Bay. And we're going to give a developer grants, right? So the taxpayers are paying to clean up the water upstream of the Little Elk, and we're going to give tax breaks and grants and financial assistance to a developer that basically turned three-plus million square feet of farmland today into a giant funnel, all of which is going to eventually end up in Perch Creek, which is going to end up in, right, the Big Elk Creek, which is going to end up in the Elk River and in the Chesapeake Bay. And the biggest problems we have today is these unmanaged flows. I mean, the water might be clean, right? It's going to treat it, he says, and it's consistent with what the state requires, and that's great. That's exactly what we need. We need more clean water. But this runoff, it doesn't matter how much you manage it, it will go into the bay faster now than it is, or faster once the work is done than it does today. And the bay simply doesn't need that kind of help. Every time we have a large rain here or up to Susquehanna or whatever, we see the effects a day later or a week later, right? With trash floating up and down the rivers, up and down on the tides, it ends up on people on the shoreline. Then the next time we have a high-water situation, all that trash comes back off and goes back into the river. And, right, we're overcome with non-native species, a lot of them thrive on the fresh water that comes from these different kinds of, from these different sources. We just don't get any more. So, all right, I'm sincerely sympathetic to all of my new friends who are neighbors of the, who are neighbors of this, they're much closer, much more immediately affected than we are. But, you know, I thought I'd spend the rest of my life living down on the Bohemia River where I went boating and swimming with my friends, and now I've got to wonder what a great plan that turned out to be. So I think, right, I'm thrilled that somebody wants to invest in the neighborhood in something that's clearly homes for people who are not looking for starter homes, they're looking for next-step homes for their families, where their ground would be part of the school system, and, you know, the, you know, well-paid, tax-paying members of the community. But I just don't think more than a few of them are going to work in that industrial park, and they'd probably rather own those houses that suffer the size of industrial parks there. So, you know, it's Mr. Jackson's money, and he's going to, he's going to invest it in a way he thinks he's going to make the most money out of it legally and ethically, I believe. And I acknowledge his commitment to being involved in the community, but he's going to do what this group of people right here lets him do. So, right, you are writing the future, and the future doesn't have to include an industrial park, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anyone else? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. It is 8:38. All righty. Anyone from the board have any questions, comments, in regards to this?
I have a couple of comments. I really appreciate everyone coming out tonight and voicing your concerns. With respect for all your comments, I don't live in the backyard where you live, I live around your area, but I do have some concerns of my own. Where I live, I have some concerns with some of my neighbors on back door, coming down the streets, some of the things they do, some of the fuels that I have to obtain when I'm coming outside, coming down Whitehall Road, diesel trucks. But, like I said, I don't want this to be negative to you. I'm just bringing my concerns because I listen to yours. Heard someone talk about the sports, and that's number one on my list. Coming from Virginia, Frederick, Gatesburg, where else? Well, you can travel three to four hours and get to the area where I'm going to talk about it. I traveled years for sports with my young kids, friends of theirs, traveled with a group of kids of 12. We stayed anywhere between, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 in the evening and make a comment. We didn't want to drive home. We came for a tournament, we participated in, we won, and we had to come back the next day. It was a choice of mine to stay at a hotel, when someone asked a question, don't take this wrong, what are we going to do with a hotel? These are the reasons why this one project needs hotels. There's places that you travel, you need to stay over because of the circumstances, whether you win or lose. This program served over 2,000 kids from Friday and Saturday, two days. And in that two days, it didn't just bring joy to the young kids, it brought joy to the parents because they had someplace to go and have their kids to be involved in sport, volleyball, tennis, basketball, soccer, whatever sports sport was. And I'm getting to my point here. The hotel is needed in a project if that's what a builder chooses to build. The sports part of it, yeah, that's a big thing in the town of Elton. Where do we have right now that we can go where our kids can be a part of an activity? And I heard someone talk about the region. A complex, sports complex, will provide that region use if you have someplace for the people to come and participate. The same way I travel, these people from Virginia and Frederick and from Gatesburg will be coming to the town of Elton to participate in some portion of this project that someone sees a vision. Someone talked about a plan. Yeah, there's a plan, but that the plan has not come to fruition yet because we're trying to attack your concerns. The concerns you have right now, it sounds like to me, is the industrial part. We're listening, we're not saying no to it, we're not saying yes to it. We're listening to you because you have just as much concern at your property as I do at mine. I listen to, the people talk about the diesel. I worked 20 years at DuPont on 896 from 1977 to 1997. Moved to another company that is an industrial company, right down the road here, W.L. Ford. And there was concerns with their neighbors. What are we making in there? What are we actually throwing out through the chimney? All these things that are causing cancer, but most people didn't know what was going on inside the building. Because you know why? It had to be protected and regulated by OSHA. The regulations, and this is where I'm getting to, we can't stop the diesel trucks from coming down Route 40, I-95, Route 7, we can't stop it. We can't, we can talk about it, but we can't do a thing about it. If these companies that we, I hear, that are going to be polluting the air, number one, those trucks need to be taken off the road. The regulations, they need to be regulated by their company, and OSHA companies and EPA, they need to find them like they do our companies that I worked for. Thirty thousand for oil spills, thirty thousand for a drip from a truck. These things have to be regulated. And when I hear people talk about the industrial part, this is really bothers me because, number one, what company is, are you talking about? What companies are driving the diesel trucks or the track and trailer? Name a company that these people are proposing. I haven't heard one company yet that are going to be involved with the Southfield project. So you have to know who you're talking about before you talk about them. If there's a company that is on the road that is polluting the air or whatever, they need to be, what you call it, they need to be towed to the EPA, towed to the regulators that are obviously finding these companies. My thing with, when I say Route 40, five years ago, there was a company that were going for, I don't want to give you names of companies here, I don't want to give you this and that. But the diesel was the main thing about cancer. I'm not a doctor, I'm not an engineer, I can't tell you what kind of particulates come from these trucks, but that was one of the main reasons why they didn't want this company to come. But down Route 40, they traveled. The fumes go up, and where they go, how are we going to stop them? How are we going to catch them? The same way with the project you're talking about at Southfield. How are we going to stop? Stop these trucks coming down Lonnie Road or whatever, Fraser Road? We can't do it. So I'm just letting you know, there's an issue, and I hear your concern, but someone's got to tell me a way to actually stop it so that we won't have to worry about the particulates that's coming from these diesel fuels. The other thing is, I'm not going to make a short sweep, we talk about the state regulating, this project's not going to go through if they find out that the roads are not going to handle the traffic. And they told, they said this several times. Unless this is approved by the state, we can't do any further, go any further. So we talk about the schools. I worked on the school board for seven and a half years, and that was one of my main concerns when we, when I was on the school board. How do we know what school's going to go where if it's not the school board that wants to propose in it? And I know Rob said he's going to be talking to the administrators tomorrow, but the thing is, we can't do anything about that until we get to that point. If a school is needed, then that's the county gets involved with that, state funding. When we give state money to the state, then it's up to the school to fight for the school board to find out where the money's going to go, whether it's going to go to the school class, building the school that you guys are proposing, or whether or not it's going to go towards the buses. I don't know where it's going to go because it's up to the school board to decide where that money's going to go. So by me saying this, my concerns are, I would love to see this project happen, but it's going to be a deterrent because of somebody's property, flying dandy, and bring your issues to the table, which you have, and try to get the developers to work with you on that project, on those changes. And I stood back there the other day, and it bothered me because even though the people were trying to make sense of what they were saying about the project, we had some people that are acting just like kindergarten people, making suggestions and slayers, but yet you don't know what you're slurring about because we haven't got to that point yet. So please, let the project develop, and when it gets to the point where you know that you really, really have to fight for it, fight for it, but don't fight before it gets to that step because you don't know what the problem is until it happens, okay? So that's my point.
Rob, do you have any comments, questions?
No, I'd like to thank the participants for their participation in the process. Earl said a lot, but I'm pretty much summing up, saying the same thing. You've got to give this a chance to grow, to see exactly what kind of problems it's going to have. Yeah, I can understand your concerns about the pollution, understand your concerns about the recreation center, understand your concerns about the education, but I think all of them will have a chance to redeem themselves if you allow that to happen. We don't know what's going to happen going forward. So basically, again, I just thank you for your participation. I'd like to thank the planning board because I was at the last meeting, they conducted the meeting very well, and the audience was very well-attended, and again, I'd just like to thank you for everything.
Gene, you have any comments?
Yeah, fine, hey, Rob. So, Gene, were you going to say something?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, because, you know, I'm sitting here, and when I'm thrown on the spot quick, I like to think before I speak, and I'd like to echo my fellow commissioner and mayor's comments that we really do appreciate you, and believe me when I say we're listening, I'm very sympathetic to all of this, and I've got some questions, but we need to discuss this amongst ourselves and with these planners. I'm very concerned about all this stuff as well, and I appreciate y'all showing up and, you know, shedding some light and making us think, and I promise you, we're going to try to do what's best for you.
Well, you said that so well, I think I'll just say, you know, but I do also appreciate everybody that showed up multiple times on this project. I remember when some of this land came in prioritization many years ago. And to be honest with you, I was a little concerned about the high density of houses that could go in there. And of course, the land sat vacant for years and years. And then when this PUD concept came in, I was actually excited about this because it showed more controlled growth in this area than we could have hoped for, in my opinion. I knew as well as everybody else here that traffic impact studies have to be done, environmental issues have to be addressed, wetlands, all that. And one thing about this town... And one thing about this town is I think often has some of the most comprehensive and stringent codes that have to be followed and met than anybody else in the county. That's my personal opinion. And I do know that the people that look out for us, like Gene Minner and the attorneys and everyone involved, they know what they're doing. They are experts at what they do. And the people in the planning commission are just like the five of us. They're residents that live here and have to live with this development for the rest of our time here. We don't want to make mistakes. But I trust the people that are steering this vote. And I'm not talking about the developers. I'm talking about all of us. All our employees, all our, you know, attorneys, our planning commission, all the boards that are going to be involved in this. So I can promise you that I personally am in favor of the overlay, so I'm going to vote for it. My only concern that I would like to put personally on the record is I would like to see a lot more buffering in the industrial area between the residents that live on the Lonely Road, French Down Road. Somebody said, would you like to have it if it was, you know, in your backyard? And my honest answer is yes. I don't have a problem with that. But do I want to see 45-foot buildings out my back window? Not really. I don't. I wouldn't like that. So I'm hoping that when it gets to that stage of the planning commission, that they're also share my feelings, my preferences for a little more. Maybe, you know, broader setbacks I'd really like to see. And I'm excited to see what actually does come up in the concept plan and what the planning commission does. But I have to put my faith in them that, because I know they're going to do the best job that they can. So I guess for the record, I just wanted to voice my opinion and my one concern about the industrial portion of it. I have no issues with the rest of the project at all. I really don't. And as far as the wells are concerned, that, I think all of us are keenly aware of your concerns about that. And it's not our intent to make anybody's wells go dry, ever. And if, like Mr. Guns, you say you're already having well problems, your water's not fit to drink. That's concerning to me. So, you know, when the mayor says that, you know, you're welcome to be a part of our water system, I would certainly think that you would be interested in something like that if you need it.
I am interested in it, but I like the clean water instead of the well water or the town water. I lived in town for years.
Yeah, we didn't create your dirty water, right? I mean, I don't even know what the situation is.
I don't know who did it. The state took care of it.
The state's taking care of it for a reason.
That's true.
I'm sure.
I have to live with that part of it.
Yeah.
If we're losing the water, I don't have to live with that.
No, I don't think that we would be allowed to let that happen anyway. I really have faith in the regulations that exist out there in governing how we do this. And I just would be shocked to think that we would create a problem for the surrounding neighbors. And I don't want to see that happen.
Very good. I think that the, I'll just make a couple of comments real quick. Gene, can you make sure that anyone in the audience can get a copy of this, the new zoning practice, which is from the American Planning Association?
I'm not sure I'm allowed to do that.
Oh, is that right? Oh, it is? Okay, well, maybe if you want to read it, you can certainly come into town hall and review it with Gene. But there were some interesting things in here about e-commerce, the future of e-commerce, the future of logistics and so forth. But as crazy as it sounds, and I know it's not me saying this, but in the January 2020 article, it talks about the future of these logistics and how the real estate values that's closer to the warehousing will actually go up. Now, once again, it's not mine, but I'm just letting you know. I read this today, and it came in January 2020. It's talking about that information, and you're all are welcome to read that. I heard you loud and clear, we're going to help any way we can with water and sewer. I'm working on the school side of things. Let's get this vote. We can't do anything unless the state highway gives the blessing. The county has to give some blessings on some of the county roads if we do anything there. We hear you loud and clear. But with that, I'm going to ask the board, are we ready to move forward to vote on this floating zone approval for these tracks? Do we have a motion?
Move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this floating zone, other than what was noted? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to move forward for the floating zone. Okay, next up, I don't know if anyone wants to leave. If you do, we can take just a couple. We've got about another 30 minutes of business. Mr. Gibling, you'll have an opportunity to speak again at the public conference. We've got a 30-minute break we're going to take real quickly. Okay, we're going to get this meeting going back again? Thank you. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and reiterate my report. We'll wait for Louis to come back in. But real quickly, we have a couple of appointments that we need to remake. I'd like to ask the board to reappoint Mr. Ed Ginder to the planning commission for the term of February 1, 2020, to January 31, 2025. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on Ed Elginder? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Well.
Motion carries. Okay, the reappointment of Mr. Chuck Parsons to the Board of Housing Appeals from the term of February 1, 2020, to January 31, 2023. We have a motion? And a second. Any discussion on Mr. Parsons? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to have the reappointment of Ms. Shirley Hicks on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term of February 1, 2020, to January 31, 2023. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Ms. Shirley Hicks? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I have the appointment of Ms. Heather Haffery on the Board of Zoning Appeals from February 1, 2020, to January 31, 2023. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Ms. Heather? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to have the appointment of Ms. Dawn Schwartz to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term of February 1, 2020, to January 31, 2023. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on Ms. Dawn Schwartz? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Got that business out of the way. We have a, one of the things that I'd like to, chief, I'd like to ask your opinion on, on exactly how we can move forward with this. I believe that we probably, I'm going to look for your guidance, but I think that maybe we need to get the motor vehicle involved or the state police. I'd like to make a move on this, to put the out-of-state tag enforcement. You know, we're going into this census period, and I think one of the challenges that I think that we have is that I think we have a lot of folks come in for their, to move into Elton, live in some of the townhouses apartments, and they never change their residency. And I don't think we've never really pushed them. And I'd just like to have some guidance from you on how we can do it.
It would be us doing it in conjunction with motor vehicle administration. State police wouldn't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
And we do do it throughout the year. But we can act, you know, more aggressively on it.
Okay. I think it's very important, I think, this time around the census, and if we could start on that in some way, really appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, I wanted to make an announcement. We actually spoke to the postmaster general this morning. And I wanted to make everyone aware that the, you'll notice that the post office has actually moved the box, the mailbox, a little closer to the curb. The reason why they're doing that, for the next 90 to 180 days, they're going to be doing some construction. They're actually going to be putting air conditioning in the Elton post office, and they're going to be doing a lot of work underneath. So some of this movement of the mailboxes, I've already got a call. What's wrong with the post office? Why are they doing this? I just wanted to make everyone aware that the post office is going through a construction phase. Also, I wanted to mention, I'm assuming that I can announce this. I certainly hope I can. It's an official letter. But the town of Elton received an additional $40,000 from the Community Legacy Program to continue the Elton Building Improvement Program, which is the facade program in downtown Elton. If you're in that district, you can apply for a portion of the $40,000 on the front of your building or the rear of your building. And actually, I think they're allowing it for some interior work today. And that would, it's a state, a grant from the state of Maryland, and we've been receiving this, I think, since probably 2002, 2003. Does that make sense, that long?
Quite that long. It's been a while, though.
It's been a long time. And then, secondly, on December 16th, we received a letter from Secretary Holt for fiscal year 2020 out of the Strategic Demolition Fund. The town of Elton has been approved for the amount of $175,000, which will be specifically used to help us acquire the Elton Armory. So currently, the armory price is $275,000. The state of Maryland is going to give us a grant for $175,000. And any work that we need to do actually gets deducted from that $275,000. So we've just got to come up with under $100,000 for that. I wanted to also mention, on January 18th, there'll be Crushing Cancer, the pre-Martin Luther King Day basketball event is going to be held at Elton High School on January 18th from 11:00 to 4:00. Senior citizens can go in, adults can go in. But it's a great, you get to see some great basketball, and you get to make a donation to a great cause, the American Cancer Society. So hopefully, some folks might want to go to that. Lou, did you have anything on your administrative report?
The only thing I would say is I sent a thing out to the board that the rec center, the contractor that erected the building, that completed all the work. So the interior work and the site work, so anything intended. But theoretically, mid-Jew should be in there. I'd love to have it by May. I don't know if they can get it done. There's a lot of work.
Okay.
You go in there every day, you see how much work has to be done yet. And they're really working in there, so we'll see.
Well, we won't push them. Okay, Mr. Commissioner, Rob?
Yes, I attended Cecil Lake in Annapolis last Thursday. Met with several of our state representatives, delegates, and senators. They assured me that either any of us could come down to Annapolis at any time, and they'd be happy to meet with us and discuss anything or any way that they might be able to help our town. I do plan on taking them up on that in this coming year. You know, I see that Annapolis is not like DC. It's a lot more of a small-town feel, and these people will listen to us. I'm pretty sure of that. I also will be attending the State of the County Breakfast at Chapers Canal House on Monday, January 27th, from 8:30 to 10:30. And this coming Monday, the 20th, I'd like to remind everybody it's Martin Luther King's Day. And I will be attending a celebration breakfast and service at Five Rivers Church on Whitehall Road. This begins at 8:00 a.m. and is in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Charles?
Louis, I believe the secretary emailed, I asked him to look at Stockton Street. Coming out of Stockton Street is very, very difficult, and it may require some yellow curving right there. It's difficult because you've got to inch into the road when you make a left turn or a right turn. Also, Louis, what is the policy based on? I know what it is because there are a lot of cars. And Rob, I know you're talking about out of state, but there are a lot of vehicles in people's yards, and they're supposed to be tagged in. I've been relaxed on it, and I'm quite sure some of you have been like you because that's a wholesome amount of work. So how should we approach that, Louis?
The vehicles are saved by the Department of Building and Zoning at their own yard. If vehicles are not properly registered or whatever, and they're on the street, they're addressed by the police department. But I know that they've issued a lot of letters, but I'll have to expand on that. I don't issue them.
All right, we're good. I just wanted to know because there's a lot, and you know, you don't have a lot.
Just a little pressure to make sure those get corrected. Gene?
No.
Okay, this is time of the meeting. We open up the floor for the public comment. Mr. Gibling, I know you think you had something else you wanted to state.
Yes. First of all, I'm glad the, coming back to these meetings again. They are very interesting. I had two comments on the census. I heard that they're going to be using volunteers for census work, and it's critical work. It says right here that it's critical work. I personally think that they should be paid commensurate with their service. And one way to measure that is to see what the census workers are or are not paid at the Northeast and, I'll say, Perryville, all right? And to match that, you know, critical work. Number two, it says here, by mail, phone, and online. I believe there's going to be certain areas in Elton that do not reply, no matter what. Now, I remember years ago, the census staffers went door to door. I remember when somebody actually coming in and sitting at my kitchen table. I don't know if that practice has been abandoned or not, but for the areas that are going to be replying, I'm just wondering if they could sort of utilize and order the census agents.
Well, the answer is for that, what Mr. Massey stated was that if you go online or you apply, the places that don't, when they put the map together, they will go door to door.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Lou, where do we stand on the Kensington Courts? I know Mrs. Bervis.
I sent a letter to June Wano with Delmar, but he's been, I asked him if the existing lights were compatible with LEDs. I don't know if they are or not because they have a different type of lighting element. He said he'll get back to me on that. As far as the adding lights, that's very complex and expensive because it's underground service. There's no lights you can hang on a pole. You basically have to construct every streetlight, and that could cost many thousands of dollars that are not budgeted. So I don't know.
You know, I actually asked Lou to do a survey, but we got Rod here tonight. And I'd actually like to ask Rod to maybe do a survey of Kensington Courts.
Was this initiated by some sort of input that you received from the community?
It was. And it was, there was some comments about needing more lighting, LED lighting in the bulbs. And then I got a couple of private messages that stated.
They didn't want it.
They didn't want it. So there were some that wanted it and some that didn't. And I said, well, we'll initiate some type of a survey. Can I put that back into your hands?
Yes.
Perfect. Lou, we don't need to do anything until we hear back from Mr. Bervis.
Are you going to share the information with me that you have?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So I need the information.
I can show it.
You got it all? You got it all?
Yeah. All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned.